Okay. Call roll please.
Joe Meyer.
Here.
Eastling.
Here.
Clint Hammer.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Bryce.
Here.
Okay, we always start. If you wish to address the council, step up to the podium. That microphone is on all the time. State your name and address for the record. Try to keep your comments brief. Minute or two if at all possible. I'm not gonna, you know, ring the gong if you're running long, but, you know, if we... Try not to repeat, you know, we understand where you're at with a lot, both sides, but, uh, you know, keep your comments brief and to the point. Just so you understand tonight, there is, as you know, the ordinance for the ATV. The highlights of what's in the ordinance are up there. With ordinances, the council will discuss it. State law requires they have three readings for ordinances, but council can waive that. So if they so desire, they could approve the ordinance in the first reading and waive the second and third and we go into effect immediately. I can't speak if they'll do that or not. Historically, this council, if there's anything that they wanna make sure the residents are kept up to date and have a chance to provide input, they will not rush this through. Uh, so when you get up, give your name and address to record. I asked that, let's keep the sidebar conversations to a minimum. Counsel, remember to use your microphones. We do have a council member on Zoom tonight, so if there's a lot of background noise, that'll make hard for him to hear. Uh, so with that, we will, one of the things, so you're new, you'll come up, you'll address the council. You might ask questions. Myself and council members will probably make notes, but we will not engage in a Q and A, just understand, we would be here till, you know, God knows when if we discuss. So if you act like we're ignoring you, we're not. They are listening, they're taking notes, they will try to answer your questions, they certainly will, taking into consideration the things you say. But don't expect, you know, dialogue between council and yourselves when you're at the podium. So with that, um, we will take citizen input and anything anybody wants to discuss, just come up to the podium.
Good evening. Becky Newman, 5372 Park Place. And I just wanted to come and voice my opposition to the ordinance allowing ATVs on public streets. We have a lack of sidewalks, as is in many citizens, students, kids, pet owners have to walk on the street, the side of the streets. And also, there is many houses that don't have enough parking. So there are cars parking on the street, and then you have the walkers walking around those cars, and now you're adding more traffic with an ATV. It's gonna become more dangerous. My main concern is the safety. I have a young little boy who we are teaching to ride his bike and how to walk in the city, and I want it to be safe for him. I also work at the schools, and we have a lot of students that are outside in the neighborhoods, walking, riding their bikes, riding their scooters, and I worry about their safety. I feel that Asbury is a suburb. We're not a small farming little community surrounded by fields. We're a suburb of Dubuque. And we have the high traffic volumes coming into Dubuque and out of Dubuque. I don't think that ATVs would allow for smooth traffic flow. I think we're gonna see a delay in getting places. We already see a delay with construction, and that's to be expected. But with the ATVs on the weekend, which is probably most likely when they'll be used, there would be higher traffic. So, Becky Newman, against.
Roger Boss, 6099 Valley Wood Court, in Asbury, in the Forest Hills subdivision. I would also be against this ordinance. Basically, most of Asbury is built up of residential neighborhoods. If this was passed, it basically means that every neighbor could, could get a, an ATV, and it wouldn't be that way the very first year, but it would be the second or third year, the population of ATVs would be getting very great. And what was a nice, quiet community will be very noisy. And you know how kids are. If you're talking about for whatever purpose or reason, I could see, maybe see a street or a road being made as a route or a continual route for ATVs for connection, but I cannot see them running wild through the city of Asbury.
Mike Grue, 280 Summer Drive. I am opposed to this. We have a traffic problem. We will continue to have a traffic problem every summer with the new street construction. Why add to this problem by adding ATVs to our streets? I see no positive to this. This last year, you turned this down three to two. Has something changed? I don't think so. If you would be neglected enough to pass this. Did you all hear the traffic report last month? Assistant police chief reported nine thousand cars on Park Place, all speeding. And where did those cars go? They came through the park. And what were they doing coming through the park? They didn't slow down, they kept on going. Spring Green, Sun Valley, we have a four-way stop there. Very seldom do I see everybody obeying that stop sign. You have enough problems to fix, you don't need to create another one by passing this. Let us put this to bed for good tonight. Only a 5-0 vote to turn this down will let the citizens know that you are listening. Thank you.
Good evening. Ann McDonough, 2469 Whitetail Drive. I'm also a county supervisor, and I perceive you to be my colleagues. We do many things together on behalf of good government for our citizens. For the room, I am the supervisor who voted no when the countywide ordinance came forward, but I want to tell you just a thing or two. There was no organized opposition. I was alone in thinking that it was a public safety issue. You have, 375 citizens have signed a petition, of which I'm not on. I had nothing to do with that. It's organic. 375 people have said, no, they don't want this to happen in the community. I know how difficult the terrain is on Siple Road. Who owns what, who snow removes what? I get that. Part of my job too. I am vilified by the group that supports ATV, UTVs. I am mischaracterized continuing. But you can get reelected. I did. And my vote would be the same. Thank you.
Bill Bodish, 5175 Valley Forge. I just spent a month... Bill Bodish. I just spent a month working in Utah. Salt Lake City area, population probably 2.5 million. The entire state of Utah, you can register side by side, there's lights, blinkers, horn tail lights, seatbelts, as a vehicle. Every suburb, every community, every county, every place in Utah, I could ride. I could ride three lanes of traffic this way, three lanes of traffic this way, side by side, aren't a problem. I made more noise with my bike coming in here than any of, anybody, any side by sides I know. They're not noise. They're no different than cars. They go with the flow of traffic. It's not an increase of traffic on weekends. It's just a normal thing. It's coming everywhere. It'd be nice if it was here. There's nothing I want to do in Asbury. I want to leave Asbury for my house in Valley Forge and go where everybody else goes. That's it.
My name is Joseph Holman, 2871 Hales Mill Road. I'm for it. I was up here, I talked last time, as far as increase in traffic flow. I guess, to me, I look at it as you're a little bit prejudiced for not allowing it. You allow every other type of vehicle on the road. So, and we have no idea how many more vehicles this is gonna increase. No idea whatsoever, and with every vehicle, there's a certain percentage of people that do not belong on the road. Be it a car, truck, tractor, bike. There's nothing makes me more angry than when I pull up to a stop sign and a bicycle comes right up along and runs the stop sign. Never seen a bicycle get pulled over in Asbury. I don't care, I mean, they can run, they have the right to the road like everyone else, but I just think, I thank yous for bringing this back up and at least give us a shot at. If it doesn't work, then it doesn't work. It's the people that are gonna determine what happens. Thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor and Council John Shook, 2370 Sprucewood Drive, Asbury. I have previously sent an email to the council and the mayor regarding ATV usage on Asbury streets and opposition of, as, of the use on those streets and continue to do that. Contrary to what was noted in the meeting last June, there is evidence that safety is compromised by the use of over the road, off the road vehicles, ATVs, UTVs, when they're allowed on city streets. A study by a University of Iowa professor noted over 60% of all ORV utilities fatalities occur on roadways, majority of the crashes involving only the ORV. It also states that ORVs are not designed for road use. And variety of things, whether the, the not being centered properly, the lack of seatbelts, whatever that may be, the tire tread, a variety of things. Consumer Federation of America notes that manufacturers, federal agencies, consumer and safety advocates note that ATVs are unsafe on roadways. It also points out that 74% of ATV deaths on public roads occur on paved streets. The U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission documents an increased risk of injury and death entailed with the use of these vehicles on roads. Included in their safety lists are never ride on public roads except across. Avoid drinking of alcohol, which logically is for any vehicle we're driving, and stay off the roads. Other, as we know from reading the newspaper, there are more anecdotal stories, and that was shared in my email to you. More directly, I also went today to the Polaris website. Polaris being the number one selling ATV in the United States. Went to their webpage. Their webpage does not list ATVs for on-road use. For uses of ATVs, they noted adventure, dunes and desert riding, farming, hunting, mudding, property maintenance, ranching and trail riding. I contact, I actually contacted, the only on-road vehicles they had were motorcycles. I actually contacted their online chat and asked what ATVs they would recommend for on-road use. Here was their statement, and I did share that with you in an email that I sent this afternoon. Their statement was, unfortunately, I would not be able to make a recommendation for on-road uses as all of our vehicles are tested and verified for off-road use only. I believe that we should all think that safety for our community and our citizens is paramount. That should be what we think about when we have a decision such as this. It should be one of the primary focus. And this is documented that it will decrease the safety for our community and our residents. Thank you for your time.
DLS line 17291 Asbury Road. I'm with the Dubuque County ATV, UTV Alliance. Since that was last year, of the 972 towns, cities and villages in the state of Iowa, three more have joined in, and we are now at 925 with only 47 towns and cities remaining in the state of Iowa not allowing ATVs and UTVs. Um, there's been a lot of talk about safety since September 19th, 2019, when Dubuque County passed an ordinance allowing ATVs and UTVs on our county roads. We've had a grand total of zero people killed on an ATV or UTV on Dubuque County's roads. We have had a 100% success rate and so far. And how, um, other things I'd like to bring up is, I know there's been a lot of concern about the shared roads. I know Russ is, uh, roads that are joined with Asbury and the city of Dubuque. Uh, at the end of the month, uh, we are sitting down with the city of Dubuque, the city attorney, the police department to start working on an ordinance and to try and figure it out anyhow why that's happening at the end of the month. Council Bluffs is the biggest town in the state of Iowa. Uh, their population is 62,840, approximately 3,000 more than the city of Dubuque. They've allowed ATVs and UTVs on their streets now for two years. They have written out a grand total of one ticket, and it was a parking ticket because somebody parked in front of a fire hydrant. Now, Officer Josh Hughes is the traffic coordinator from that, and I asked him, what kind of an impact have you seen? And he says he's seen none. He says it's, he recommends that the towns that call him up and ask him what their experience is, he says to open up. He says there really hasn't been anything. And, uh, one of the big reasons that we want Asbury to open up is our master plan has always been an off-road trail system connecting every town in Dubuque County. And Asbury is part of Dubuque County, and we would love to have Asbury be part of this anyhow in the future. Anyhow, this is what our plan is, and for Asbury residents to not be able to access this would be terrible. And, uh, I can understand a lot of people here that are against it, and some are just afraid of change, but not all change is bad. And for the people that want to partake in this, anyhow, it would be wonderful, and for the people that don't, anyhow, they won't even be affected by it. They won't even notice it. So, we encourage you to support this ordinance. Thank you.
My name's Kevin Hennings, 2100 Messina Court, Asbury. I'd read one of the letters that they'd said somebody had seen 25 to 50 ATVs in a row, and he was kinda upset because he couldn't pass. Um, my thought is if they were going the speed limit, good for them. And then they had mentioned about tires. They make noise, they're not safe. Well, in my business, I sell tires that are made for street use on these ATVs, and they actually cost more than a car tire. So that's been good business. And when I started this, um, this, oh, how do I... And they're not as loud as a Harley-Davidson, but if you ever been at a, walking through a crosslock and a Tesla comes up to you, you can't hear it. So, but when I started this petition, I had gotten 200 signatures in spots that were in, well, like in my area, I went through my neighborhood and I got quite a few. And then I went to another neighborhood, and right away I'd gotten, on the first street, I'd gotten 200, or, uh, my first page was 20 page people, and it filled up right away, and I only had two no's and a couple that weren't home. And, uh, this is too easy, so it's not fair. So I went to another neighborhood, excuse me. And, and I, it took three streets, but I got four to five no's and a couple no homes, and I thought, this is the vast majority of the people that I had been talking to were really into this. So I thought, this is, I'm feel like I'm doing a good job here. I really was. And then, uh, and then I realized, well, my wife had said, you kinda did the West End, and she calls it the new Asbury. So my intention was never to put people against, Asbury people against Asbury people. And, uh, what would it hurt to give it a chance? I mean, Asbury, and ATVs on their streets, as the city reports in other areas, has experienced any issues whatsoever that we've been talking about here. And, uh, at any time, if it's passed, anytime you can revoke it and just take it away. At least we tried it. Um, so what would it hurt to give it a chance? I know change is hard, but isn't that how things are moved forward? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jerry Bealow, 2348 Sprucewood, Asbury. Um, I wrote a couple letters to the city council, and I was here last year in July of '22, and the majority of the city council voted against it. Again, like someone said earlier, what has changed? Only thing we've seen is more traffic and a new, um, four-way stop at Asbury and Siple Road due to the increased traffic. And a petition by those people who are in Forest Hills due to the traffic problems they're having there. We are also talking about roundabouts. Why do we need roundabouts? Well, we need roundabouts because of increased traffic. And so I know that's on your agenda for future. Um, I only heard about the requested change in ordinance through a friend who was on Facebook and saw it on the Asbury City, um, or excuse me, Asbury Eagles Club and also Asbury, or the ATV Alliance. Um, otherwise, I didn't know about this, um, change until then. And so, in four days' time, after talking to a couple neighbors, um, who all felt the same way as I did, um, we decided to go out and knock indoors and ask people how they felt. You know, maybe we are the, we are the minority, but as the person just quoted, the neighborhoods he went to, I went through, um, well, first of all, we got 370 something, I don't know what, that has to count of how many, um, signatures we got, but we barely touched a portion of Asbury. And there was about six of us going out in four days trying to get it. Um, we knocked on doors and the majority of people, um, signed the petition. First question they asked was why? Why do they want this? I heard that to connect trails. Um, somebody made a comment that we are prejudiced against them ATVs. We're not. If you want to go out in county roads, you know, according to state law, you can do that. It's legal in the, in the county. But I do feel, as someone else, um, said earlier, that our, our safety for our children is, is really important, our safety for us, um, walking on the streets with, I walk with my dog, I do ride my bike, I follow the rules. I mostly trailer my bike because I am afraid of being hit on the roads in Asbury, and I go out to Heritage Trail, which I have seen that the ATV people have put out a, um, survey to see if they can get Heritage Trail taken over by the ATVs. Something we do not want. And so I don't care if they go out into the county roads and if they go and, um, travel and make their own trail system, but I don't think the city is the place for that. Um, so I'm hoping that you will agree with us. I'm, I'm gonna give you some of my reasons. I heard some of them already, so I'll try not to repeat those, um, of those same concerns. Someone, uh, I'm gonna give you the 357 or 75 residents that signed, um, the petition, what they asked me and told me were their concerns. One was instability of the vehicles. The warning sticker on the ATV says, um, it's not designed for paved roads. Um, we already talked about the traffic issues, we already talked about children. According to the CPSC, there are more than 700 deaths and over 100,000 hospital-treated injuries annually, um, from ATV, UTVs. Another big issue people worried about is that it's allowed 24 hours a day, seven days a week on our city streets. Okay? So they're worried about property damage, the possibility of trespassing on city trails during the night, tearing up sensitive lands, increase in littering, especially alcohol cans and trash dumping. Um, ATVs and UTVs are inherently loud. Someone made a comment that they're not. I went on multiple pro ATV, UTV magazines, and here's what they said. They are allowed because they are designed to be lightweight. They are high-performance, high-compression, high-RPM engines which are poorly insulated to decrease weight. They have short exhaust systems, they do not have catalytic converters, which are required by motorcycles and cars. This allows hazardous toxins to pollute our air. Several pro ATV, UTV magazines rank the quietest new machines on the market. These are ones out this year's, and only electric ones fall below the state, um, decibel guidelines. Um, according to our state ordinance, noise pollution is measured in decibels. According to Iowa statute 3216.1, ATVs, UTVs should not exceed 86 decibels. Anything over 85 is universally considered hazardous. OSHA standards say anything over 85s can cause permanent hearing loss, and hearing protection is required. Pro ATV, UTV articles say most models produce between 85 to 100 dBAs, the decibels, during normal operations. Every three points represents a doubling of sound energy. If five ATVs or UTVs are traveling together, they would exceed over 100 dBs, the decibels. This will increase hearing damage, damage to the riders as well as residents, increase noise and air pollution. Over the years, our cars have been made safer by adding airbags and cameras, um, but according to the Iowa State Highway Patrol, car deaths have decreased. But in the last few years, including 2022, ATV, UTV deaths in Iowa have increased. I did note that someone said there was none in Dubuque County last year, and I'm really glad to hear that. Because one death does not just impact that one person. It impacts their family, it impacts their community, and impacts the first responders. I'm a first responder. If you've ever come across an accident and you've ever dealt with a fatality, you'll never forget it. Um, many of our roads do not have any shoulders here in Asbury. Asbury Road, Middle Road, um, they are prone to rollovers because of their high profile. Many of our city streets intersect with Dubuque. Um, I heard they were working with Dubuque, but we'll see what happens with that. Um, so if they rode on those roads from Asbury to Dubuque, um, they would be illegal on the city of Dubuque roads. Um, let's see. Oh, somebody mentioned motorcycles. Okay, so motorcycles are required by law to be between 78 and 84 decibels, which is within the state legal limit. I know there are some that have, you know, pipes added to make them louder. Yes, they should be arrested, they should be pulled over.
Could you, could you wrap up, please?
Okay, I will. Okay, um, but motorcycles are also required to have a skills test with the DMV. So, how will this increase our tax revenue? This will bring no, no tax revenue to us other than to the nonprofit Eagles Club, and , um, the only other one would be Casey's. Um, they don't have license plates, they only pay $17.50 to have a DNR sticker, which is really small. I asked the DNR, how would we report hairless or reckless behavior? And they said, we would have to take a picture. Now, good luck doing that. So I'm gonna wrap up. Who will pay for this increase of the wear and tear in our streets, increased need for police officers and first responders for accidents or incidents? We know they are both in short supply these days. Increased noise caused by groups of ATVs, UTVs traveling our city streets will disturb our once peaceful community, the reason I moved here 20 years ago. We will increase stress, safety issues, trespassing, property damage, possible injuries, fatalities, not to mention the trauma tolls that was involved. The, the over 350-some people, um, we were able to reach in a short period of time, assigned a petition, only because we ran out of time, um, would ask you to vote no on not allowing ATVs, UTVs on our city streets. Thank you.
Dave Jermaine, 2324 Birchwood Drive. Uh, I won't go over the other points, uh, but I have opposed to the ordinance for all the reasons previously stated. And just as I'm sitting here, I'm watching the traffic on Asbury Road, which has been continuous, and we all live here. You know what traffic is like on Asbury Road, school days, people going to work, people going out from work. It's only gonna get worse with the addition of the new Southwest arterial. A lot more traffic is coming through here to get that, and I just think it would be dangerous and a bad idea to a lot of this ordinance. Thank you very much.
My name is Bangin' Waki. I live at 2340 Briarwood, and I didn't know about this until four days ago. So I'm opposed to it because I don't think many of the residents of Asbury even knows what's going on. I think if you took votes for all of Asbury, you'd, the majority of it, would vote against it. And I know a lot of towns have ATVs. I go to Guttenberg off and on about every other week. There's a lot of ATVs on the road between Bangston and Farley and, and Holy Cross, and I know Guttenberg has ATVs and people running up and down the street, which all my family does, but they have campgrounds on both ends of their city. They're trying to get tourists to come to town, so they allow ATVs. Kids are riding on ATVs, people are drinking, going up and down the street, and they all let them, they let it all happen just because they want people to come into the town. I don't think we want that in Asbury. So I'm opposed to it because I don't think many people in Asbury even know about it. We should get all of their opinion. Why don't we put in the newsletter? Why don't people know about this? All I have to say.
I'm Jan Jermaine. I'm 2324 Birchwood. I am opposed to this, as Diane had just said. I wasn't aware of this either until Jerry brought it to our attention. I don't know how that happened, but I'm glad she did. Uh, I live, you know, I'm, I'm Birchwood, and you guys just put it... I live, you know, on Birchwood, and you guys just put in a beautiful new trail on Burrow right behind us. There is a lot of people walking with children in strollers, with dogs. And plus, you have, you can hear dogs barking. It echoes off of the bluffs on the other side. And I think if you brought ATVs in, it would just bring a lot more noise. There's already noise down there, you know, by the park. I just think it's a bad idea. I would beg you, please don't vote on that tonight until you do have more input. It seems like there's both sides. I think you need to take that into consideration before you vote. Thank you.
I'm Marie Laraman, twenty-three, forty-one, Sprucewood, Asbury. And I definitely am opposed to the ATVs on the street. We have plenty of traffic as it is. And for the safety of everyone, you've had that sign out front since you had this that says, "Be safe Asbury." I think you should take heed to that and keep us safe and quiet neighborhood. Thank you.
Anyone else? There's one person on Zoom. I don't know if they want to address counsel. You should be able to unmute yourself. I'll give you a minute. No, there's A Hillby. There's one more. There's an A Hillby. You're not seeing all the participants. Okay, I'm going to assume the Zoom participant does not want to address the counsel. I see no other input. So we will move back to the counsel for consent agenda. Counsel, have anything for separate discussion, or is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Second.
Motion made in second. Call roll, please.
Go Meyer.
Hi.
Eastling.
Hi.
Clint Hammer.
Hi.
Miller.
Bryce.
Hi.
Consent agenda is approved five-zero. The first new business item is ordinance five of twenty-twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter seventy-five, all-terrain vehicles and snowmobiles, the code of Asbury, code of ordinance, city of Asbury. First reading. I asked the chief to speak first on this.
Thank you, and thank everybody for coming in tonight. Appreciate it. So I was tasked to go out and try to find some information about UTVs and what other communities have done, and to get some numbers put together as far as what we're seeing in Dubuque County right now with all the other communities that have done this. I started out with the Dubuque County Sheriff's Department. I wanted one of the officers to come in here to speak tonight, but unfortunately, they couldn't. They had other commitments. So far, since this ordinance passed in Dubuque County, they've reported four accidents. One was back in July, twenty-third, on twenty-twenty-two, truck and a UTV had a collision on the roadway. The driver of the UTV was intoxicated. UTV on August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, there was a single-vehicle accident. The driver was apparently eating donuts in the middle of the roadway and rolled over. He was also charged with an OWI accident. On five-twenty of twenty-twenty-three, there was another ATV accident. And I believe the vehicle locked up on him, and he was thrown from the UTV. And then on five-twenty-eight, just here last month, there was another ATV accident, single vehicle, and the driver was thrown from that and again was intoxicated. So those are the four accidents that have been reported throughout Dubuque County. I contacted Piasta, Farley, Eppworth, Dyersville, Cascade, spoke to all their police chiefs down there. They reported zero problems, no accidents, no citations, and honestly said there was no problem. I then started looking into some numbers. Okay, what's happening across the country? What's the numbers as far as accidents across the whole United States? I went to the Consumer Product Safety Commission where they reported five-hundred-and-sixty-six accidents, have fatalities with ATVs and UTVs, which is kind of a high number, I thought. So then I started looking. It's like, okay, well, ATVs, what else is out there? So I started looking. It's like, well, what's the count with pedestrians? You know, two thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven pedestrians were killed last year just walking in the streets. So then I went to bicycle safety. And it said over a thousand bicyclists and over one thousand three hundred thousand were injured on bicycles, motorcycle fatalities. I looked at those numbers as well. In twenty-twenty, there was five thousand five hundred and seventy-nine motorcycle fatalities last year. Motor vehicle accidents last year was forty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-five motor vehicle fatalities. I didn't look into all the statistics of why those accidents happened. We could assume alcohol, driver error, a lot of those things that go into it. I then went to, okay, what's Dubuque County have for ATVs and snowmobiles right now registered? I contacted Dubuque County Recorder's Office. They reported right now, in Dubuque County, they send out three thousand eight hundred registrations for ATVs, UTVs, and snowmobiles. They couldn't separate them because they just sent them out and said, here's what we know for these powersports. That's what's out there. So again, thirty-eight hundred of them roughly registered in Dubuque County alone. So it didn't seem like a very high number for Dubuque County, me personally thinking that. I then contacted Marion Police Department, who has the same issue such as Asbury being next to Cedar Rapid. I spoke to Chief Mike Kitzman down there. The population of Marion right now is thirty-eight thousand people. They adopted this ordinance last year, and I asked him a lot of the same questions I'm hearing tonight. What problems are you having? What's the issue? And he quote said, "We are having zero problems." There's been no accidents, no citations. We've had two complaints with them, and we went and checked them out, and nothing to them. I asked them anything special they did with their ordinance. They reported what they did was put in the hours of operation from ten PM to six AM. You're not allowed to ride. They also put in for a seatbelt for their riders. I asked them about tires and all the same things I'm hearing tonight, and he said they discussed all those things, but decided not to do anything with those. He also contacted Council Bluffs in Ankeny, Iowa, and they also reported zero problems. And like somebody said, they're one of the higher populations in the state of Iowa. Which again, I was surprised that, you know, with these machines becoming so popular, we're not hearing more accidents. So that's what I have as far as what's going on. Now, I've heard some other things tonight about the high traffic, the noise, the speeding. And I get it, a lot of that's going to fall on our shoulders as far as enforcement. We have a reputation in this town that, you know, our police are out there. We usually do not allow speeding. We don't like problems, because if there's problems, I have to deal with it. I don't want to deal with problems, you know? I like to be as easy as possible. So again, if I would think there would be a problem, I will come to you and say, we need to get rid of this ordinance. It's becoming a safety issue. It's becoming a problem. And again, you have that authority to wipe this ordinance away. Any questions?
Tom, could you just elaborate about the stops that we talked about a little bit earlier?
So, yeah, Iowa law, unlike a motor vehicle, I have to have probable cause to stop a motor vehicle. And on a UTV, ATV, snowmobile, DNR police officers, police officers do not have to have a probable cause. We can stop that vehicle just to pull it over to conduct a safety inspection of that vehicle. And anything we find after that just leads to our probable cause for citations or arrest.
Any questions for the chief? No, sorry.
Okay, you have all the safety issues in the ordinance that they need to comply by.
Yes, Iowa law, you've got to remember, most of these things are just like motor vehicles. And in the state law or the city ordinance we're adopting, they have to have headlights, taillights, mirrors. They have to be a licensed driver of eighteen years of age, sober, they have that motor vehicle insurance. All those things apply. So if there is any damage or anything like that, they're liable, just like a motor vehicle. Again, I don't want to see problems within our city. I want people to be safe. I want them to operate any vehicle within our city as safely as possible. I don't want to see them speeding, rip roaring through our town, causing noise, causing problems. Again, I have to deal with that. I refer to work as new as possible.
And they have to have seatbelts.
We can write that in our ordinance. Now, most of these UTVs do come with seatbelts. But the state law, because they're not registered through the Iowa, or state registration, they're registered through the county reporter's office. They do not have to wear seatbelts. However, we are writing this, and so we feel that they want to wear seatbelts. We could write that into our ordinance. Again, that's what Marion has done.
What's your recommendation for seatbelts?
I am a big seatbelt proponent. I will always say seatbelts. Again, that's just my feeling on seatbelts. There again, you can ride a motorcycle or moped without a helmet right now in our Iowa roadways. State law says you can do that, right?
And what about airbags?
Well, if they're going thirty-five miles an hour. I mean, I've worked multiple car accidents in our city. Thirty-five miles an hour, most of those airbags are not equipped. I mean, it takes a, I want to say severe crash to set those off, because in the right circumstances, there's sensors on them that go off. I would think most incidents here, if there was an accident, it wouldn't set them off anyway.
Any questions for the chief? Do you want to stay close?
No more statement.
Okay. All right, then if nothing else, chiefs available, Beth, do you have anything to add as far as city attorney's opinion or anything before I take it to counsel?
Yeah, we've had questions from the city council in prior meetings. And from the city attorney, he writes, he does not see the fact that some of the roads within the greater Asbury area are not within the city limits as an impediment to the city approving an ATV, UTV ordinance allowing use on city roads. However, he does recommend that the city issue a statement that indicates that the passage of this ordinance only permits the use of ATV, UTVs on city streets within the city limits of the city of Asbury. And please note that certain portions of Asbury Road, Middle Road are not located with the city limits. And therefore, this ordinance does not permit or allow such use of ATV, UTVs on roadways located outside the city of Asbury city limits, which Dubuque ordinance currently do not allow or permit ATV, UTV usage on Dubuque streets or Asbury or roadways.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, and it's back to you for discussion on the ordinance. Remember to use your microphone so Kurt can hear you.
I guess I'll start out. One of the things that, and I appreciate everybody's input tonight, both sides. The one thing I'll start out with is that there were five-hundred-and-seventy-three signatures that are between the two petitions. There are three hundred and seventy-five noes and a hundred and ninety-eight yeses. So it's roughly two-thirds no, one-third yes. Of the people that spoke tonight, it's more than two-thirds no. What I've always encouraged, and I heard this brought up tonight, I would have liked to have this referendum done so everybody in the city has an opportunity to do this. And we did get a reply back, and Beth, maybe you want to read that section of the comments from the city, and then I'll continue, please.
I put the question, should, can the city have a referendum on the ballot for ATV, UTV usage? And this response came from Mickey Shields at the Iowa League of Cities. And the state code only requires referendums for very specific purposes, which is mostly seen with general obligation bonding. There are a few other less common items, such as changing a city's form of government, changing the powers-duty structure of a library board, and changing a council representation plan. So other than, so other public policy issues are not subject to a referendum. County auditors won't do a referendum without legal backing and procedural steps from the state code. So in this particular case, the ATV, UTV usage, this would be something that a county auditor would not allow the city to put on referendum.
Thank you, Beth. So the next best thing for me, and other members of the council have asked for this, they said, well, we want to hear from people. We don't hear anybody that's really against it. Well, the next closest thing we've got now is two-thirds and five-hundred-and-seventy-three signatures on two petitions is probably more than have voted in some of our city elections. So I commend everybody that went out and got signatures both ways. And that's the next thing that, to me, that now tells me, well, I can't have a referendum. That's the next best thing. And the other alternative I'm going to suggest is that if we can't have a referendum, the next thing that might be close to a referendum is we have elections this fall. I think that people will vote for, we'll make sure that people, let them know what their position is, and we'll tell real quickly whether people want to have, or for or against, based on how they vote in that election. So with that, you've heard all my comments. And I don't know who the elderly later is on Spring Green Drive or Sun Valley Drive that was referred to. But I haven't heard from her. But the thing that I would recommend, and I would ask the council to do, is to vote no tonight and wait until after the election, or at least, and it can be brought up after that. Bob, you've always commented about you don't want to saddle, you know, a future council with some decision. Well, an election's going to determine whether or not. And then I will go on record as saying, if Dubuque, if you get Dubuque to pass this, I will, I can't see us being an island at that point, then I would vote for it if Dubuque passes this. But I don't, I think the comment about us being a suburb, we're attached to Dubuque on three-fourths or four, you know, eighty percent of the sides, and it's still problematic to me to have people going on roads that it's not legal to get into, even though we're just attesting to the city of Asbury. So I'm just encouraging people either to vote no or table this until after the election.
Well, I was the one who asked to bring this back along with Kurt, and the reason I did, because when Mr. Hennings came forward with wanting the ATV, UTVs to go through, I said, "I'm not hearing from anybody. I'm not hearing anybody for or against." And I said, "We have people here that came and addressed this from the county." And I said, "I don't want to hear from the county. I want to hear from the citizens. That's who I represent." So he came back with the signatures and made a compelling case to pass it. Since that has happened, now we've also heard from the other side, and it's two to one against. Well, I do represent the citizens, and I would like to give it a shot for six months, a year, or whatever, only because the statistics prove, at least from what I've heard tonight, that there isn't that great a danger, you know, there isn't that great a danger to the citizens, but I don't like to do that either. You know, you can't throw a carrot out there and pull it back. I don't want people to go buy, you know, these expensive machines and then not be able to use them. The other thing that I hesitate to pass it is because they want a trail system through, even if they get Dubuque, I don't know how they're going to get through Asbury. We have enough trouble trying to get bike trails, walking trails. We can't connect our own city because we have farmland that's in the way, and we have parts of Dubuque that's in the way. So it's kind of a cluster, to tell you the truth. So I would be leaning towards either one of Russ's comments of deferring it, otherwise having a vote tonight. And I would probably vote no, just because we have two-thirds of the citizens that I represent saying no.
Okay. I don't expect to have dueling petitions. You know, I'm sure both sides could get hundreds more if they went out there and tried harder. And it puts us in an awkward position of saying, okay, we were voted in. an awkward position of saying, okay, we were voted in to take care of the will of the people. Well, right now, I think we're half and half. We could get two-hundred more, you could get two-hundred more. It's just, it could be endless. So I, I agree that we should maybe table it, or we should put restrictions on it, pass it and say, okay, we need this from sunrise to sunset. You know, let the people prove that, yeah, we're responsible middle-aged people that want to get from point A to point B. We don't want to go through your neighborhoods and terrorize them. So that would be my issues.
One of the things I, I think about with the ATV, UTVs, that there's a lot of, uh, things that are misconstrued about what an ATV is. I mean, we, many of us grew up in which ATVs were these three-wheel, four-wheel little vehicles that you'd use on the farm or on a construction site. And, but what we're talking about these days is not a vehicle like that. These are UTVs that are thirty-five thousand dollars and up, probably. I'm just guessing, folks. So if I'm, if I'm high or low, don't hold it against me, I'm not going to try to sell you one. Uh, but these aren't the people that are going to be out riding around doing donuts in the middle of streets. And they, from what I've seen out of the UTV groups is that they are, have been very responsible. What we see out of the UTV groups in other cities is they've been very responsible. I think it is something, I mean, we are to represent the city, we are, we're elected to represent the citizen, uh, in which, much, much like Karen said, I mean, we could sit here and people could collect signatures on petitions for the next six months, and it could be five thousand, or I guess it'd have to be three thousand each way. So, uh, my thought is, much like Marion, a much larger city than us, is if we can put some time limits on the, on the writing of them, in which, I, I think maybe instead of sunrise to sunset, because that is so, so variable, but, uh, by putting set time limits on it, that we could give this a try. And if it works, it works. Nice thing about an ordinance, I think we've all been on this council long enough, we understand how they work, and we know that it's possible that if we are hearing back from citizens, if we're hearing back from our, uh, uh, law enforcement that they're having issues with it, we can rescind it. And I, I hate to say that, because if somebody does go out and buys one of these with the intent that, hey, I want to take advantage and use this, then, well, okay, we can't do much about it. I guess, I think we have a duty to at least give it a shot, to try it and give it a, give it a look. And I guess that's where I'm going to stand on it.
My opinion, uh, I guess everybody can hear me now. My opinion would be that, uh, I'm, I'm in the same boat as, uh, as Craig Miller. I think that we've, we've looked at all the evidence that's out there, and, uh, I, I can't see where there's anything that is, I don't know, overwhelmingly glaring, looking me in the face, saying, there's a real problem in this particular area. I'm very much inclined to at least give this a try. If the rest of the council wants to table this, I, I'd have to say, I, I don't see the point. I, I see that there are people on both sides, as Karen said, we could probably go back and forth and get signatures back and forth, and for that, for that matter, some people that signed one petition might sign another one, and vice versa. But I'm inclined, if it was called to a vote tonight, I would be a yes vote, give it a try. If you want to put a, uh, a time limit on it, say a year, let's try it for a year and see how things are going in a year. I'm, I'm very much in favor of that, always have been, said so from the beginning. So as it stands right now, if it called for a vote, I would probably say, yes, let's at least give it a try. So that's kind of my, uh, my stand on it. I certainly understand the safety aspect, but I, I, forgive me, this, this isn't a, this wouldn't be a, how do I want to say this? This, this isn't an attack on sidewalks, but we had a sidewalk issue, and there's probably nothing, nothing really safer than sidewalks on the road, and yet that got voted down too. So, I, I don't know, I, I just don't see that the safety aspect is the driving force here. There, there is a will of the people, and at least half the people, as Karen pointed out, at least half of them are for this. I say, let's give it a try. And that's my two cents.
Just, just a point of clarity, um, I've, I've heard about putting restrictions and different things on that. Do those have to be part of the, of the motion? Because otherwise, or does it have to start over again if we put restrictions on it for the second and third reading? Um, when do those, or should, or does it need to be tabled until those restrictions can be identified?
The motion could be made to approve the ordinance with amended amendments as, as proposed.
But I mean, when do they have to be proposed?
Well, at the time of the motion. You can't, if you, you can't make a change in the second, third reading if that's required.
Yeah, so, so any proposed changes would have to be made in the motion, not-
Right.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, in lieu of what Russ just put forth, then, uh, then I would make a motion here to accept ordinance five of twenty-twenty-three with a proposed test sunset date of one year, and to, uh, to follow the recommendations of Chief Henneberry by having seat belts, uh, as part of this ordinance as well.
What about hours?
I'm sorry, repeat that again?
What about hours of operation?
Oh, thank you for pointing that out. Uh, the hours of operations, forgive me, I think it was ten o'clock at night till, help me out, in the morning.
Tom, what is your recommendation for the hours?
Did you hear that? Kurt is in the back of the room. He doesn't, he does not have a recommendation prepared, but he repeated the, uh, Marion ordinance of ten PM to six AM, they were not allowed.
Then, then I would, then I would go with the ten PM to six PM addition to my motion.
Okay, the motion was to approve the ordinance as presented with sunset one year from, Kurt, give us a date tonight.
Uh, uh-
One year-
From tonight, from tonight.
About one year from the date of approval.
Okay, one year from date of approval, that's better.
The motion is, is, as the ordinance was presented to sunset one year from the date of approval, um, seat belts are required with restrictions not to be operated between ten PM and six AM. Do I have a second?
I would also like something- I would also like-
I have a motion on the floor, um, I, well-
I'll second it.
Okay. Yeah, so if you, if you wanted something different, it would have to get voted down, and, yeah. So, motion second, discussion.
What?
Go ahead.
I would like to put in there what the city attorney said about the shared roads also. He recommended that Beth did, quote, you know.
Could you clarify? I'm trying to.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll get to that. Just want to clarify what you're asking, or what you're proposing.
Attorney just says when we, you know, put this out that we also issued a statement. He didn't say that you have to be included in the ordinance.
One more time, Beth?
The city attorney didn't say that we had to include his, what he said, but he said that when we approved this ordinance, that we should issue a statement that clarifies where, you know, only within the city limits, the city of Asbury, and the city of Dubuque does not allow, um, ATV.
Well, he doesn't recommend that be part of the ordinance, that it's just a statement.
Correct. That was just a statement that how to communicate with the public once approved.
Okay, noted. What about an orange flag? Would anybody want to put that in there so that we could see these ATV, UTVs better, just in the beginning, anyway?
I, I question the, how much the orange flag is going to help. They already have to have taillights, headlights. Many of them sit up higher than a lot of small cars today. They're obviously going to be more visible than a motorcycle even, so I, and, so I guess that's, I don't know if it'd really be that helpful. I mean, I guess, maybe I would have to refer to somebody who drives one of these things, that they feel that it, that would benefit them.
I'm sure not, we're not the only ones that ever brought up about orange flags, and maybe we could put a statement in that if we ham them, use them.
Recommendation there, Karen, would be that either you, like, we have, a requirement within the ordinance to have brakes, headlights, taillights, side mirrors, safety belts, a horn, a muffler system not to be more than eighty-six decibels, that if you wanted to have an orange flag, just make it JKL and add an orange flag.
Beth, do we need to amend the, do we need to amend the motion to, uh, to incorporate a recommendation?
I just checked, Kurt.
Okay.
Do you want an orange flag?
No, I, I kind of am in the, in the same boat as, uh, Miller. I kind of think that they're, they're big enough and more, I mean, shoot, they're, they're more visible than a motorcycle. I, I'm, I'm of the opinion that they're visible, visible plenty, especially with lights.
Does anybody know if the state would allow us to license them to operate in the city?
Well, the rule of thumb is always that things are, are more, we can be more restrictive, just not less.
Why don't you not go anywhere?
Yes, I can speak to Russ's question about that. Uh, you cannot charge them basically to ride within New York City.
There you go. Okay.
Okay, so, so there are no, no friendly amendments, the motion is, 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 uh, presented and then seconded. Um, let me go at it this from a different perspective, and this is kind of along your lines, Russ, with the election. Um, so, and Karen, you're spot-on. We could get stacks of petitions. I, I, I take them with a grain of salt. They certainly are indicative quite often of the public sentiment, but when someone's standing at your door and you want them to go away, or, we don't know what was said, right? They could, they could have said this, this, and then, I'm, I'm talking about both sides. We don't know. We had these discussions with the sidewalk, what was said at that time. So petitions are great, but you, you've got to take them with a grain of salt a little bit, because you don't know conversations that were, were, were held at the door. Um, you know, there's a lot of concern about safety, and to me, if you're concerned about the safety of the rider, your, your, your concerns are, I don't think are valid, because it's their right to do what they want to do with their life. If that means drive a motorcycle or a car with seat belts and a, and, and multiple airbags, that's a personal choice. I mean, the leading cause for the CDC of deaths of children aged one to four is drowning. So do you want to start banning swimming pools in the city? That's a personal choice that these parents make to have, have a swimming pool. They take those risks, and it, it's their, their lives, their children's lives, and we have to entrust them to make the right decision. So it's not, I don't believe it's on a city council to impose restrictions on somebody's life, what they can and cannot do. If they want to partake in an unsafe activity, in your opinion, then that's entirely up to them to do so. Um, there's a lot of concerns about the noise and the traffic and all these things, but honestly, I don't believe we have statistics to say that those negative effects that you're concerned about are, are going to come to fruition. We don't know that, right? We do know that they have not come to fruition in the other cities and the counties that have done this. So the best thing I think you could do is give it a trial period, and, and, and hear me out. The reason I'm saying this, if you want to make an election issue, then give the people that are, that are sitting here, and the ones that are voting, and the ones that are going to pull papers, give them four or five months of data to look at. Okay, maybe the ones that, that would say, I'm not voting for anybody that's in favor of this, find out it's not an issue. And ma- so if we wake and make it an, an, an election issue, we're making it based on absolutely no data, because we have no data in the city, because they're not allowed. The only data we have tells us they're not an issue, and I'm not, honestly, personally, I couldn't care less. I will never own one. They're fun to drive. I went crazy on one out in the desert in Vegas, but I won't own one. I don't want to spend thirty thousand dollars on a toy. If I did, it wouldn't be that. And I'm not worried about driving on the streets. I don't have a personal preference. I'm just more about the process, the facts, the data that you have, and, and basing your decision on that. So that's why I'm, I'm saying a trial period would make that decision for the voters in the fall much easier, would it not, than to go into another four months of having nothing to look at? You don't know if they're safe. You don't know if those issues are going to be, be really happen in Asbury. So I'm saying it makes sense to give it a shot, and I remind you and remind everybody in this council, chamber tonight, you give Beth twenty-four hours notice, you can have this thing rescinded. You could vote on it today, you could have it rescinded by Thursday if it's a problem. This is not etched in stone and carried up the Mount Sinai or whatever and handed off to, by Moses. This thing is fluid, and it can change at any time. So I'm saying it, it makes sense to get the data before you have an election that hinges on whether or not we're going to be AT, UTVs. We have no data. Thank you.
Bob did state six months or a year. Would we want to go a whole year?
Doesn't matter since you can rescind it immediately, in two days' notice. I mean-
Not necessarily, but he did, uh-
I'm just saying, is, is that, does that matter since, he could say, let's do it for six months, and you can still rescind it tomorrow.
Doesn't the motion have a one-year timeframe from-
It does, it has sunset.
Mary, you want to just maybe read the motion again, or do you want me to read the motion?
Well, the motion is presented, and then it was added with, uh, it will sunset, means it will go away, would take council action to renew it, one year from the date of passage. It could be tonight, it could be two meetings from tonight. Seat belts are required, and the restricted usage not allowed between ten PM and six AM. Other than that, as the ordinance was presented, is the motion.
Correct.
Another discussion? Go ahead, we'll wait.
Well, I'm, I'm really struggling. Um, I've been doing this, this is my sixteenth year. I voted for sidewalks on my own street. Um, I've taken abuse over a lot of issues. I like to do what the citizens want, I really do. I'd really like the trial period too, so I'm really torn. I just want you to know that we have sleepless nights thinking about things to protect our citizens, and this is an issue that has bothered me for quite a while. So I, I can tell you right now, I don't know how I'm going to vote, and that's a bad place to be. I should know, and I don't.
Well, and I'll remind the council that a yes vote tonight is not a, you're not given final passage, so if, and again, this is to the point where you want citizen input, and I, I just heard about this. I, we heard that many times. I, you know, I don't know what we can do. There's only so much we can do short of knocking on your door and say, this is on the agenda. We use Facebook, we use, um, the city website. Obviously, the word got out. So, you know, a, a yes vote tonight, and before anybody crucifies someone tonight for voting yes, they may simply be saying, we need more time, we need more input. So therefore, they could wait for the second meeting, second reading, and say, I'm going to vote yes again. I'm still against it, but I want to go for a third meeting. So a yes vote is not, on the first reading, does not pass the ordinance. It is not an endorsement for your help, Bob, but it does allow the residents two and up to four more weeks to voice their concerns, or, you know, rally the troops, or they want to do, whether it's pro or con. A yes vote, again, just simply says we're going to the next phase. It is not an approval, it is not necessarily an endorsement. Anyone else? Call roll? All right, no other discussion, call roll, please.
Gomeyer?
Nay.
Eastling?
Aye.
Linkhammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rice?
I could take the easy way out, but I'm going to vote yes.
Okay, the first reading has been approved four to one. At this point, I'll ask the wish to waive the statutory reading of three meetings before the ordinance is passed.
I'd like to bring it back-
I'd like to bring it back, please.
Yeah, I, as expected, um, council will not, um, waive the three readings. So this will be brought back, brought back two weeks from tonight for the second reading. Same thing there again. A majority vote in favor does not pass the ordinance. It takes a third vote for that to happen. So thank you for your attendance tonight. We're going to move on to the next agenda item.
Okay, good deal.
Does council want to take a five-minute recess? All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Are we ready to resume?
Hey, it was- Beth, we have a recommendation appoint Jared Flure to the park board?
That's correct. Um, park board has recommended, um, Jared Flure, um, to fill a term starting immediately and ending October eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
I have a motion.
So moved.
Okay, any final discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, next item is resolution eighty-five of twenty twenty-three. A resolution approving the insurance premium for property liability, workman compensation insurance services for FY year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. We do have representation here. Kevin, I don't know if you want to anything to add or otherwise we'll just take it to council. Here for questions? Okay, Beth?
Kevin here worked pretty diligently and Russ asked before the meeting, you know, can we get Kevin to hurry it up and Kevin, can you attest to how many, you know, jabs I made at you before, you know, we, we got to this point, um, you know, yesterday? Why don't you go to the podium? That way people can hear.
Push the button?
Push the button.
Just a few jabs actually. So, no, we, we've obviously stayed in very close contact from the very early part of this year. Um, talking about expectations, we had a lot of communication early on with, uh, with the carrier. Obviously, the plan was to revisit uh, travelers yet again, uh, which you can see, obviously, they, they did not fare favor, uh, very favorably on the, the option this time around. So um, as I said to Beth, you know, this, you know, increases are always fun to deliver, right? I mean, everybody loves when their costs go up. Um, and certainly I would say in our, in our world in insurance, that's been the norm for the last couple of years. But I would say that this result, while it may not look awesome, um, I was ecstatic that we were able to keep this at the level that it was. What you don't really see unless you really start looking into the details. Um, for instance, the property being a, a significant, you know, area that had an increase. Well, a lot of that is actually due to exposure, meaning that values are up, uh, nine percent on buildings and five percent on all, you know, personal property, other property. So you know, a significant part of that coming just from the increased values and exposure that needs to be insured, you know, to ensure that the city is properly protected.
I saw the most significant increases was in, uh, property insurance where it went from, you know, thirty-six thousand, six seventy-eight to forty-six thousand, three seventy-nine, but compared for compensation where what we saw there is, um, what they have is experience modification and our experience, uh, dropped from one point three to one point zero three. So there was premium savings there and I have never seen this probably happen in workers' comp too much, but then there's also for what the wages are paid, there's rates attached to it and most of the rates decrease. So pretty much, you know, correspondingly, what, um, increases were for property insurance, we did get some nice decreases in our workers' compensation. Um, due to the safe, you know, working habits of our employees. Right now, we're looking at, um, a hundred and sixty-three thousand, um, four hundred and eighty-four dollars. Um, city council does have the option.
It's actually on page ten at the bottom. That, that would actually be something to, to address.
City council does have the option to choose, uh, higher deductible premium. Currently our deductible is twenty-five hundred, correct, on our property?
Correct. The, the current deductible is twenty-five hundred. Um, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So we presented options with both a ten thousand or twenty-five thousand dollar option. Um, as I explained to Beth, you know, the, the trend right now in the property market, just in general, doesn't matter who you are or what you do. Uh, it's getting more restrictive, right? So rates are increasing, capacity's lower, deductibles are ra- are being raised. You know, terms are, are just more tight. And so what we're seeing is carriers are pushing for higher deductibles. They're pushing it on all perils, but specifically they're also pushing significant increases in deductibles for wind or hail. Uh, on top of adding restrictions or limitations to things like cosmetic damage to roofs, um, siding, that sort of thing. So the, the deductible is something that I would suggest you will find that that's probably going to be increased in the future, whether you choose it or not. Okay, so whether you choose that deductible now, it's probably going to be, get pushed up just by trends in the industry the way it looks currently. So what I would tell you is that ten thousand deductible certainly makes a lot of sense when you start looking at the historic losses of the city for the past five years compared to the premium savings that it's, that it's bringing back. So I gave Beth a, kind of a simple example or rundown where we looked at the losses over the last five years just for this particular property insurance. And so you're saving roughly about eight thousand dollars. If we assumed, which again, it would be different each year, but let's just assume it was eight thousand dollars in reduction of premium for each of those five years. You had losses cumulatively that, that you would have absorbed in addition to the deductibles that you already paid on those losses of an additional thirty-two thousand dollars. So you've got about forty thousand dollars theoretically in savings and you got about thirty-two thousand dollars that you would have absorbed by paying the higher deductibles based on the losses that you had in that same five-year period. So mathematically, it seems to point toward the deductible makes sense. Okay, thank you for counsel.
Questions?
I, I just have one question. Um, it says estimated annual premium. Can we get rid of the word estimated? This is what we're going to pay?
That is what you're going to pay. Estimated is, well, it's estimated because you could change something. And so if you change something, the premium will change.
Thank you.
Yeah, makes sense.
Also the deductible, that's about the only decision you have to make here, I guess.
How many incidents, like, just like last year, how many claims do we file? Just, just-
So good question. So I'll just run you through the numbers real quick. I don't know, Beth, if you have that email, but so, so your losses for the EMC property in twenty eighteen to nineteen, you had four total claims. The total incurred losses for the city, less any recoveries that they had, a couple of those claims were people that ran into light poles and that sort of thing where they would recover from responsible parties. But you had a hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and five dollars in that policy year. The, there were again, four claims. One was forty-six hundred and two, one was thirty-eight ninety. Um, the third one was a hundred and six thousand sixty and the fourth was ten thousand five ninety. Okay, so those, again, those numbers are above what you paid in terms of deductibles. So obviously two of them would have been within ten thousand. So you would have absorbed the full four thousand six hundred and two, the full three thousand eight hundred and ninety and the hundred and six thousand dollar loss, you would have had ten thousand and the ten thousand five hundred and ninety dollar loss, you would have absorbed ten thousand. So the additional amount from that year um, on those losses would have been twenty twenty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars.
We just, we just spent twenty-three thousand dollars to save eight thousand.
In one year.
In one year.
In one year. But in the nineteen to twenty year, you had two claims for a total of two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. You would have been money ahead. And then twenty twenty-one year and twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two year, you had no losses. You would have saved premium dollars by not paying any deductible. This year you have one claim for five thousand seven hundred and five dollars. So again, when you cumulatively look at those five years, you had about a thirty-two thousand dollar extra risk that you would have taken on with the deductible versus approximately forty thousand dollars of savings if you assumed you saved eight thousand dollars. I wouldn't recommend the twenty-five. I wouldn't recommend twenty-five. I would recommend serious consideration of the ten thousand. And, and as I told Beth, I mean, typically when we see deductibles like this, I mean, we could probably go back to the, a year or two ago, we voted similar deductibles. The savings was nowhere near that. It's typically five to ten percent tops. Uh, for whatever reason, it, I don't know why it's so significant this year, but you don't normally see a dollar for dollar or even a greater than a dollar for dollar return on that seventy-five hundred dollar difference that you're picking up. You're actually- That just doesn't normally happen. You're not going to get a zero. You're at the lowest deductible right now. And again, like I said, you're, you're probably going to see that twenty-five hundred, whether you choose it or not, is going. As an example, travelers, I think their deductible, their minimum was, was five or ten. Um, so it, it's just the trend in property. It has nothing to do with the city. It's, it's, has everything to do with the property market and insurance right now.
I don't have a crystal ball. Great. Wayne, are we feeling lucky this year?
I think if they're pushing us that way, must-
Well, you can certainly wait. I mean, there, there's no harm in waiting. Um, you know, you can revisit the deductible again next year. So nothing says you have to. I'm just, with what we're seeing, um, we're not seeing deductible levels stable. We're not seeing them go backwards. They're going, they're being pushed up by the marketplace. So you could ride it out at the lower deductible until it's forced on you. Um, and you might not see that same level of premium reduction in a future year. Hard to say, but generally, we don't see that level of premium reduction when you increase deductibles.
I was, I was just surprised that the increase was only ten thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars in the premium.
You, you and me both. What do you make of motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with current deductible. Stay the way it is.
I'll second.
Motion made in a second to accept the proposal from Captain Butler with the, keeping the deductible the same. Any other discussion? Call roll, please.
Joe Meyer?
Aye.
Heesling?
Aye.
Linkhammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Thank you. That's approved five-zero. Thank you, Kevin, for the hard work and not so great increases. Okay, next item is resolution eighty-six of twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving change order number eleven for the Meadows Clubhouse Reconstruction Project. Um, Jeremy's not here. I will address the two-tone paint. You've got pictures. You've already approved the staining of the brick. We looked at it closer and we at least wanted to ask your consideration. You wanted to do the two-tone option, highlight the soldier courses around the doors and windows. Particularly just for your consideration. We didn't want to, you know, put it to rest without, uh, just bringing it back. They're waiting for us to give the go-ahead one way or another so they can get started.
How much is the change order for?
Uh, it's like three thousand. I'm trying to find it here. I guess it's related to more masking and partial gallons of paint or something.
Three thousand ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Guess my question is, which way are they leaning in terms of the color schemes, dark gray brick?
If, if we do a single, it would be the darker gray. Bring out the contrast on the front with the siding. If we did the, the two-tone, then we would use the lighter and then accent with the darker. So that's why you're not seeing the same color in the two options, the one versus two-tone.
I, I was out at the Meadows yesterday and I, I'm just, I'm so pickled by it. This looks so amazing right now. Uh, and went down, looked at the downstairs and I got even more excited because I see a lot of potential for that room down there way beyond golf hangar. I think there's a lot more that can be done and marketed with it and done over a twelve-month period. Uh, things we didn't have available to it. I, this, if, if the showstopper out there, I think that two-tone really sets it off and makes it, makes some of the highlights of the building pop out and I would be in favor of on that.
For what it's worth, for what it's worth, I, I'd be in favor of the two-tone as well, but it's a personal option and it's, it's not a sticking point for me one way or another.
The two-tone gives it more curb appeal, I would agree with, but I think either way is fine.
Yes, I looked also in the big scheme of the picture. It's three thousand dollars difference, you know? And go versus the two-tone. I agree, yes, it does pop.
What does Jeremy say?
Two-tone, but again, we respect the council's decision and yeah, the, the extra three thousand dollars.
You know, as I roll back and forth between the two pictures with the, uh, the single and the two-tone, I, I will have to say, this is an observation that I didn't make until just now, is on the backside underneath of the deck, that two-tone kind of lightens that up and it, it just makes it brighter underneath of that deck. So I don't know if that, if that carries any weight, maybe carries a little bit more with me. I think I'd probably still lean towards the two-tone. Does, does that, does everybody see what I'm saying or am I all wet here?
Do you get a motion?
I'll make a motion to go forward with the two-tone stain.
Second.
Motion second, the two-tone for the change order discussion. Call roll, please.
Joe Meyer?
Aye.
Heesling?
Aye.
Linkhammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
That's approved five-zero. Next item is resolution eighty-seven of twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving pay-up number ten for the Meadows Clubhouse Reconstruction Project.
Yeah.
Is, is this the final payment? It looks like that-
No, there's still. Must not have done much work, um, this past month. And they're probably like waiting for like doing the stain and the painting.
Yeah, there's not much handling to do. There's nothing other than punch list items that I'm aware of.
A thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars still to, um, be paid on that, will be paid out in the next, this whole year.
Do we have a timeframe on the landscaping?
Was here tonight. Uh, we told third, the fourth, third to fourth week of June, so here we are. Yeah, it's imminent.
I talked to the land, we talked to the landscaper when he was sitting back there today.
I get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution eighty-seven of twenty twenty-three, approving pay-up application number ten to the Meadows- pay application number ten for the Meadows Clubhouse Reconstruction.
I'll second.
Motion second for the discussion. All roll.
Joe Meyer?
Hi.
Heesling?
Hi.
Think Hammer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rice?
Hi.
Approved five-zero. We'll move on to eighty-eight of twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving change order number one for the Hales Mill Road Reconstruction Project.
Yeah, I guess, um, just to start off with a brief update on Hales Mill Road, um, uh, sanitary sewer work is all completed and the water service lines that were, um, in design have also been installed. So, now, um, the contractor started with storm sewer installation this week, uh, down by the church, um, and then they'll work north and then do the south, uh, Lega storm sewer after that. Um, with that being said, uh, change order number one is in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-six cents. Um, this first change order, and it's actually more of, uh, something that's going to be done in the future here with the project. At Autumn Drive, um, meeting with the contractor, we just revised some of the quantities. Um, it's just going to make the paving process a lot easier on the contractor, and it's also going to reduce some of the time for hand, um, as well later on. Um, so, it's just something more of ease of construction, save a little bit of time maybe as well. Um, so, with that being said, MSA would recommend approval, change order number one for Eastern Iowa.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number eighty-eight of twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion.
I just have one question, Nate. Um, before we get to the paving part of the street, have, have, have we got the flaking issue resolved? So, we don't have that on Hales Mill?
We're in discussions actually right now. The contractor, the contractor's actually confirming, or they sent an email and I haven't heard an answer yet, just confirming that fly ash will now be used, um, for this project. And then I'm also in communication with the contractor, having them reach out the bar to see if we can just have some assurances on this that...
Did you see in the paper that Manchester's got the same problem? But they, they mentioned some kind of lime in the cement as opposed to, I didn't hear fly ash come up at all.
Yeah, I, I read that article as well, and I saw that with the lime. Um, that's not brought up. Um, I, I'd have to, you know, believe that what we heard from the Paving Association is what, what the issue is. Um, we're still looking into it. I know it's coming up here, but we're getting assurances from the contractor.
And have we got the core samples that we requested?
The core samples have been collected, um, but they are not being sent to a lab for testing at this time until, uh, unless we get direction from council to do that.
You did not approve the, the testing. You wanted us to go to the contractor and do a shared, and they refused to do that. So, we took the less expensive option, at least preserved our, uh, got the samples when we could, and they're respecting the chain of custody. We did not put them in the hands of MSA or anybody related to the city. They're being held by, um...
Terricon.
Terricon. So, we have them.
What, what's the cost of testing?
The testing, I, the top of my head, I want to say it was like nine thousand something. Well, I could bring that quote back if wanting to.
Yeah, they're preserved. If we wanted to get them now, rather than, we can certainly get more later if we need them, but we missed the opportunity, so I took the liberty under, under, you know, my spending.
Yeah, we took, we actually, we got four samples. We took three from Spring Green Drive. Um, two samples were from bad locations on Spring Green Drive, and one sample was from like a generally okay location, just to kind of have, uh, a control per se if something's different or that. And then we took one from a bad location on Sunset Drive.
And are we getting any comments from the people about the driveways?
Um, I have heard one comment from a resident, but I know that we've had communication. I put together, uh, a letter that was issued out to residents on the streets just about the problem, and that it's still being looked into and worked.
Thank you.
Joe Meyer?
Hi.
Heesling?
Hi.
Think Hammer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rice?
Hi.
That's approved five-zero. Resolution eighty-nine, twenty twenty-three is a resolution approving pay-up number three, the Hales Mill Road Reconstruction Project Phase Two.
Yeah, the, uh, pay request amount for, uh, number three here is at three hundred eighty thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-one cents, and that is what's for all the remaining, uh, sanitary sewer installation work and also the, uh, water service line work as well. Um, with that being said, there is, um, twenty-two thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifteen cents being held in retainage currently, and the balance to finish, including retainage, is, uh, just a little over one point eight million. Unless council has questions, MSA would recommend approval of pay request three.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution eighty-nine of twenty twenty-three, approving pay application number three.
Second.
Discussion. All roll.
Joe Meyer?
Hi.
Heesling?
Hi.
Think Hammer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rice?
Hi.
That's approved five-zero. Resolution ninety of twenty twenty-three, resolution approving, excuse me, change owner final for the Hidden Meadows Overlay Project.
Jim, would you just want me to go through the whole list of close-out stuff here? Okay. Um, so, we are closing out the, uh, Hidden Meadows Project here tonight would be the plan. Uh, change order, uh, number final is in the amount of five thousand, two hundred and one dollars, and, um, that's actually a decrease, not an increase. Um, and that was just for the balance of final quantities. With that being said, then the final pay request, um, amount then comes to nineteen thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars and eighty-nine cents, and that also includes the release of the signage. Um, and then with the substantial, um, completion, final completion and the release of claims, I always just make the comment that the substantial completion date was established as May first of this year, and there's a two-year correction period on this project, which would then mean the correction period ends on May first of twenty twenty-five. Unless council has questions, MSA would recommend approval of these final close-out documents.
On ninety of twenty...
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution ninety of twenty twenty-three, uh, change order final for Hidden Meadows Overlay Project.
I'll second.
Discussion. Kurt, if I cut you off, uh, stop me. There's always a delay in there, so.
Okay.
All roll, please.
Joe Meyer?
Hi.
Hi.
Think Hammer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rice?
Hi.
That's approved five-zero. You have Resolution ninety-one, twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving pay-up final for the Hidden Meadows Overlay Project.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution ninety-one of twenty twenty-three, uh, final pay application.
Second.
Discussion. All roll.
Joe Meyer?
Hi.
Heesling?
Hi.
Think?
Hi.
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 That is approved. We will move on to citizen input. There still is one person on Zoom. If you would like to address the council, now is your opportunity.
We got one item to close the project, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ninety-two of twenty twenty-three, resolution approving final completion, release of claims, statement of final completion, owners' acceptance of work in, for the Hidden Meadows Project.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution ninety-two of twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Joe Meyer?
Hi.
Heesling?
Hi.
Think Hammer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, apologize. Thanks for correcting me. We're back. This is input. There are two people, I guess, on... Zoom, if you'd like to address the council. Just unmute yourself. I'll give you a minute. All right. Next item, we have Bishop Board, GM Report, Park Board. Motion, comments.
I'll make a motion to approve their reports.
Second.
Second.
What's the second and the final? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, Kurt, you want to start roundtable, please?
Yeah, I just want to comment on the, uh, I, forgive me, I, I certainly wasn't trying to drive anything down anybody's throat, but I'm really glad that we gave this a try. I think that we certainly owe it to at least half the citizens to give it a try. So, I want to thank everybody for being patient and tolerant about that whole situation, and, uh, also be tolerant about me being on my technical nightmare.
We've come to expect that with you. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thanks.
Russ?
Um, I just maybe, uh, would ask that, there's one item about the, the word system, and the only, only question I have on that was if we can just find out how many votes or, you know, what, how big a petition they need to do that, um, if somebody wants to, if somebody asks us a question.
We talked on staff. And, and just be aware that it's no way that could, I don't know if you're asking, but if it comes to me, it's like, no way we could get that, get a special election in time for the election. So, it is not going to be feasible to have that for the next election. Karen?
I just want to say a great job tonight. Everybody kept their cool, and it went smoothly.
Bob?
Um, I would maybe like the, uh, chief to check on the hours to make sure that that's the hours we want. The, there's a reason sunrise is sunset. You know, our hours change a lot in the winter time. So, I mean, do we need something different than that? I'd, I'd like that for next meeting if we could possibly, at least your recommendation. That's all I have. Thank you.
Craig?
Uh, I, I was impressed by the young woman who wrote in and regarding composting in Asbury. Uh, composting is a very unique thing that, it's very challenging as well to, I don't know if it's something that, I don't feel that it's in the best interest for us to try to take that on, but I do appreciate this young woman's, uh, attitude.
That it? I have nothing else. Do you have anything to share with council?
I think we've all had enough for tonight.
I would agree. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Hi.
All is, all right, thank you, everyone.